I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools: Leading Students to Success.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming down to this, the Orange County School Board. If you could, please, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and join me in a moment of silence and in the Pledge of Allegiance. First, a moment of silence.
Resilience to the flag of the United States of America. And to the liberty for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, welcome, everybody, for coming. We have a couple of very special recognitions tonight. Our first special recognition is for some of our dedicated partners in education. And tonight, we are recognizing some of those individuals and honoring some of our students. And I will share with the parents out there in the audience tonight, there is nothing this board loves to do more than to recognize great students and great parents who have raised great students. So, thank you for coming down tonight and allowing us to recognize you. To help us introduce our first guest, please welcome Ashley Sparrow, Orange County Public Schools Resource Teacher for Visual and Performing Arts, Dance, and Theater. And Ashley takes her job very seriously. We have this great marketing photo like this OCPS Means Success one up on the ninth floor. And yes, that's Ashley in the pink tutu. So, she is a dancer herself. Welcome, Ashley.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to thank Orange County Utilities for inviting Orange County Public Schools Elementary, Middle, and High School students to use art to express water conservation and produce the beautiful Orange County Utilities 2015 Water Conservation Calendar. Now, I will introduce to you Jaclyn Torbert, Orange County Water Division Manager. Jaclyn.
Thank you, Ashley. Did everyone get your calendars? Great, great. Well, good evening, Chairman Sublett, and to all the board members, and to Superintendent Jenkins, and especially to all of our student artists, their teachers and principals, and to the family of these talented young citizens of Orange County. This night is becoming a tradition for us, and it's pretty special to me for so many reasons. But the main reason is that this project unites and celebrates two of the more important things here in Florida. The drinking water that we all need to survive and our children. At the beginning of the school year, we challenged our students of the Orange County Public Schools to use their artistic talents and their knowledge about the environment, as well as their commitment to water conservation, to creatively share their ideas on how we can use our drinking water in the most efficient way. I'm actually here tonight just to tell you that the participants in this program actually met that challenge. And I think, as you will see in the artwork, they exceeded that challenge. As a result, the students that we're celebrating tonight, we're showcasing their artwork that's both in our calendar, and we also have it on display at our county administration building. Not only did we do a calendar this year, but we did a decoration of our rain barrels. So, those are on display at the county administration building. And if you could permit us, we would like to actually share with you the students that are here tonight, the artwork that they did, and would ask them to stand, if that's okay, tonight? Okay, great. First, is Chase here? Chase here? Chase, stand up. Chase is actually on the cover of our calendar. And we want to congratulate Endeavour Elementary School and Chase for being the cover winner. Congratulations, Chase. Is Gabrielle here? He is the January picture that's highlighted in the calendar. And he's from Oakshire Elementary. Congratulations, Gabrielle. On the monitor, you can also see the teacher and the principal and the grades that they're in. So, we are celebrating not only the students, but the teachers and the principals as well. And if you guys could also stand along with your students, that would be great. Michael Landono, is Michael here? These things are just so adorable. Michael is from Discovery Middle School. Congratulations. February. Is William here? I don't think he's signed in yet. But he's the March contestant winner. And he's from Timber Creek High School. Stephanie, our April winner. Stephanie. Maitland Middle, along with her teacher and her principal. Caroline. I think I skipped May. Can I go backwards? Cecilia, is Cecilia in the house? There's Cecilia. Water and the earth should be friends. So adorable. Caroline, is Caroline here? From Lake Nona? Caroline. She's our June recipient. Elio Luis, is Elio here? His teacher is here on his behalf, and she's been here quite a few times. Madison. Madison Waltz, I think you're her teacher? Is this Patricia? Is here to represent Madison. Emma? Is Emma here? Emma is from Discovery Middle School, and you'll see her picture in September. Jessica, is Jessica here? Jessica is from Timber Creek High. Nicholas DeGatto, is Nicholas here? Hey, Nick. Nicholas is from Freedom Middle School, and he's the November photo or picture. Samantha Medina. Samantha is from Piedmont Lake Middle. This year, we wanted to share with you some of the barrel contestants winners. We had several themes we asked them to participate in. You know, the best Florida scene, the best water conservation theme, et cetera. But this rain barrel from Jones High School was viewed as the best overall. Lake Nona High School won the best Orlando theme. Piedmont Lake Middle, again, won the best Florida theme. Discovery Middle, the students there had the best environmental theme. Oops, I keep doing that, sorry. Conway Middle had the most creative theme. Avalon Middle, that was it. Avalon Middle had the best conservation theme. And we could not do all of these things without having partners that support these programs. And we have at least one of our partners here. We had McCoy Federal, who actually provided a lot of support for this program, as well as Home Depot. Carol, Carol. We always like to recognize them for the support that they give. And we also appreciate the opportunity to work with the students of the Orange County Public Schools because they are our biggest ambassadors for making sure that we have sustainable water supply in Orange County. And I thank you.
Well, Ms. Torbert, we want to thank you, in particular, for sponsoring this contest every year, along with Home Depot, McCoy, and your sponsors with us in this endeavor. So, thank you very, very much. And for our winners, I know the board would like to shake each of your hands. So, if we could have the student winners sort of file up here, we want to shake your hands and say congratulations to Ms. Torbert. I know we'd like to shake your hand as well, as well as our representative from Home Depot and McCoy Federal Credit Union. Well, congratulations again to all our contest winners. I know I speak for the board when I say we're so proud of you, and we love your humor. When we look at those posters, great senses of humor that we see depicted in those. Great talent, you're right. Our next guest represents another initiative that is very important to Orange County Public Schools, and it involves safety, specifically pedestrian safety. It is a program called Walk Safe, and it is supported by Best Foot Forward and Orange County Public Schools. Best Foot Forward, if you have not heard of it, is a pedestrian safety initiative that launched in June of 2012 to reduce pedestrian deaths and injuries throughout metro Orlando by getting drivers to yield to pedestrians in crosswalks and getting pedestrians to be more careful crossing streets. At this time, I would like to introduce Josette Severin. She is the Walk Safe statewide manager. Ms. Severin, please come to the podium and welcome, and thank you for this very important initiative. We are sadly reminded annually of the need for safer pedestrian crossings and safer driver behavior. So, we really appreciate you doing this initiative for us.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. I want to take a moment before I announce the Walk Safe poster contest winners in Orange County to recognize Orange County Public Schools for increasing their participation in the Walk Safe pedestrian safety curriculum by 120% this year. So, congratulations. You are a Walk Safe Champion of the Year for 2015. And now, to announce the winners in Orange County for the Walk Safe poster contest. Our winners are Alyssa Whitting, Eva Robinson, and Madison Anus. They have been showing outstanding knowledge of pedestrian safety behaviors through their demonstrations of artwork that they drew in their art classes this year on the third day of the curriculum that they did within their schools. So, I want to congratulate them on their outstanding achievements.
Well, we're going to recognize them in a moment and have them stand. Ms. Severin, again, thank you so much for this initiative, and it is truly very, very important to us in Orange County Public Schools. Folks, you should know that in OCPS this year, nearly 18,000 students took part in curriculum created to help decrease the numbers of students injured as pedestrians, to increase physical activity, and to encourage the use of walkable environments. The curriculum combines classroom instruction, interactive practice through PE, and conceptual learning through their art classes, which leads us to their annual poster event. And tonight, as mentioned by Ms. Severin, we are honoring the three winners from the 2015 Walk Safe statewide poster contest from Orange County. And as I call your name, I believe we have two of the three who have been able to join us tonight. I'd like to ask each of you to come to the front of the room. The winners are Alyssa Whitting, who was not able to be here tonight, I don't believe, from Lake George Elementary. And let's give her a big hand anyway for Alyssa. I think I mispronounced it. It was actually Alyssa, in case she's watching at home on TV later this week. And then, with us tonight, Ava Robinson from Lake Sibilla Elementary in the second to third grade category. Ava, can you come up here and let us shake your hand, honey? And as she's coming up, I'm also going to ask up Madison Anais from Lake Silver Elementary in the fourth to fifth grade category. Madison. Madison and Ava and Alyssa go to great schools with great teachers and great administrators. Can I have any of the administrators or the teachers from those schools, please, stand and let us recognize you as well? And finally, probably the most important person in the potion are the parents who have raised such wonderful children. So, let's have all the parents of all of our award winners tonight stand up, both from the water contest and this contest. And we have one more special recognition tonight. I'm not going to let this moment go by without mentioning a great honor. And yes, this is a little bit about us, y'all. So, indulge me this a little bit. But one of my favorite people likes to say it's a poor frog that doesn't praise its own pond. We're going to praise that frog tonight. And that is Mrs. Kat Gordon, our vice chair. And she's no frog. She's a wonderful lady, and she has been named the 2015 Osceola County Secondary Media Specialist of the Year.
Thank you. Thank you to the board members, and thank you so much. I love the children.
And Ms. Gordon really does love the children. She has been doing this job and also serving in the classroom for how many years now, Kat? I don't want to guess wrong.
Since 1967.
Since 1967. And, you know, she knows my nickname is for her. I stole it from Beyonce. You've heard Beyonce goes sometimes by Fear of Sasha. This is our very own Fear of Sasha. You want to get something done on the school board, you come ask Mrs. Gordon to get it done for you. But she is also a wonderful professional, and this is a great recognition by her peers of her excellence in her day job, her profession, which is as a media specialist and before that, a classroom teacher. So, congratulations, Mrs. Gordon.
I thank, thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And above all, my board members that have really been hanging in there with me. And especially to the new board members that have come along. But all of us, the senior board members now. So, I just thank you because you've really worked with me through the years to see that I could get to the meetings, and I am very, very grateful. I can't make them all, but I generally make the main ones. I only miss Christine every now and then, but I usually can come in and then she fills me in. But I thank the superintendent for your support because you've been very supportive. And Mr. Chairman, I thank you. And it is a great honor. I think that Melba is the shortest one that you see there. And when I went over in Osceola County, Dr. Vogel, who was the superintendent in Seminole, asked me to come over and assist. And of course, Dr. Jenkins came back and gave me Dr. Lawson to come and help us to take one of the schools that had received a grade from the State Department that was not so good. And Dr. Lawson came over and worked with us. And Melba Luciano was my assistant principal for 10 years. And all of the awards that I won in Osceola County, which was Teacher of the Year and vocational Teacher of the Year, Disney Teacherific Award, the Ida Baker Award. It was, every time they said something at the board meeting last, this, on Tuesday, she kept saying, "I helped with that. I did that." She was under me. And she was. She was my principal, assistant principal, for 10 years. And now, she is superintendent, and she started as a paraprofessional. So, I'm very proud of Melba for pushing me and for my board members for working with me, and especially the chairman. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, again.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I love that you used Ms. Gordon's quote about "a poor frog that doesn't praise his own pond." Because when she first told us about this, I wanted a photo so that we could put it up on the screen, and she begged me not to do it. But I, and so, the first photo was a little less clear. The second photo, we're very proud to display. And I will tell you, Melba Luciano, that my colleague and fellow superintendent certainly does brag about her media specials and the work that she does there. I wanted to just read, since she passed it down, the actual, it's a beautiful glass plaque in a nice satin cushion. And it says, "Osceola County Schools Literacy Partner, 2015 Secondary Media Specialist of the Year, Kat Gordon. Welcome to the library, the place to be."
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And Mrs. Gordon, thank you for making us look good as you always do. Thank you. All right, we have one final recognition. Then we're going to pause and let everybody filter out because we do know it's a school night. So, thank you for coming down. But we have one newly appointed administrator to recognize, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Jenkins.
We do. We were trying to get that green bag. That's Woody's. Sherry, that's Woody's.
Don't leave with the bling.
We, we have one new administrator to introduce to you tonight. That is Emilio Vitulie. He was instructional support at Waikiki High School. He is now going to be the assistant principal at Millennium Elementary.
Evening, everyone. Thank you. I'd like to thank the Orange County School Board, Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and her staff for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to thank Vice Chair Gordon of District Five. I look forward to working for you and with you. I'd like to thank my principal, new principal, Ms. Lineham, for believing in me enough to hire me, and for my former principal, for Ms. Rhonda Young, and for Ms. Santana for being not only my mentors, but for continuously believing me and pushing in me in this direction for this endeavor. I would like to thank my family as well, who have always supported me in anything I do. And I look forward to serving all the students and the community at Millennium Elementary. Thank you.
Vice Chair Gordon.
Mr. Vitulie, you are going to love Millennium. I'm telling you, with Ann Lineham and that great staff, her assistant principal, the faculty and staff, you never end up going there on, at night. They're always there at night. And not only are the Millennium students there, but the parents are there, and the dads are there. Like, I see all the dads out there tonight. It is so good. It is a joy going to Millennium. I think I only missed one event at Millennium, and we were at the board table. But I think I made everything that you did this year because you sent it to Deborah McGill. She put it on the calendar, and I had so much fun. And I take everything that they do and take it over to Osceola County. So, thank you so much. So, you're going to love it there. Thank you, Ann Lineham and staff from Millennium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mr. Vitulie, is that your beautiful daughter there beside you? Hold her up so we can all admire her. She's a beautiful little girl. Those are all your family there? Okay. Well, I hope those others aren't your daughter, or you started awful young. She is gorgeous.
Why don't you introduce your family?
Your wife should be very proud.
Go ahead and introduce your family to us.
Well, Mr. Vitulie, you've had some wonderful mentors. And on behalf of the board, on a more serious note, we just want to say congratulations. And we hope that your family recognizes what a tremendous accomplishment this is in your career. And I always like to share with newly appointed administrators that it really boils down to, for this board, one word, and that word is trust. This appointment means that we trust your leadership abilities. It means that we trust your judgment, and it means we trust you with our community's children. So, congratulations. You should be very, very proud. All right. With that, it is a school night, and it is testing season. So, we're going to pause and let all our honorees filter out. Thank you for coming down tonight.
All right, Dr. Fritz, hey, how are you? Good, good, good.
I just test, checked it, and it went, but it's not on the first side. Do they put it on the first side?
That's fine.
Okay, all right, good. So that'll pop up there.
Yep. And then just left click or right click.
Just this one?
Oh, that one.
All right, very good. Thanks.
Is that yours?
Yeah.
All right.
We are going to go ahead and continue, continue with our meeting. Let me make a couple of preliminary announcements. Any individual who would like to address any item on our consent or our non-consent agenda may do so by completing a speaker form that looks like this. You can get this form from Mrs. McGill, who is the lady at the far left-hand side of the dais. And when that agenda item comes up, I will call on you to speak. You will then have three minutes to address the board. Please take advantage of your opportunity to testify, because that three minutes can go by very, very quickly when you get up here. If you have schedule constraints, let us know, although we do not have a very busy agenda tonight, so I think we're going to be fine there. Ms. Cobert could not be here tonight. She was calling in. Ms. Cobert, are you there? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am here. I'm en route to Tallahassee. I'm going to mute my phone, but I will be here.
Thank you, Ms. Cobert, and thank you for calling in and taking the effort to do that. If you need to speak, just text Mr. Rodriguez or Dr. Jenkins, and we'll kill you up. Okay, don't text.
Thank you.
Don't text. Just speak up.
I will, thank you.
We also have a Drive Safe program. Okay. All right. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda?
We do. Chairman, item 1401 is withdrawn. That is request approval of surplus property declaration and real estate purchase sale agreement between the board, the City of Winter Park, and U.P. Fieldgate, U.S. Investments. That item is withdrawn. Additionally, under Section 5, we have withdrawn disciplinary action for student DD.
Okay. I find cause to amend the agenda as requested by the superintendent. Can I have a motion to do so? It's been booed by Ms. Gould. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda as proposed, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. All right, we do not have any public hearing tonight, so we are on our consent agenda. We do have, we don't have a strategic plan update tonight, do we? I don't.
We had it.
Okay. Did I pass right over that? I'm sorry, Dr. Jenkins.
He's here every week.
No, no, I don't want to do that. Let's do this. Board members, do you care if I shuffle the agenda and go ahead and do consent agenda and do strategic plan update after that? Is that okay with you, Dr. Fritz? Okay. Let's do that, because I already queued up the consent agenda, and I want to get to our speaker. We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Ricardo Cumberbatch. Mr. Cumberbatch, welcome. He has signed up to speak on Agenda Item 14.04, which is a settlement agreement. If you could start with your name and address for the record, Ricardo.
Ricardo Cumberbatch, 5710 Oxfordmore Boulevard in Windermere, Florida, and I live in a rural settlement. April 7th was a very interesting event that took place with the OCP at Orange County, where they agreed to a settlement agreement, basically. I'm sure you guys will talk about it tonight, and you'll probably vote on it. I was hoping that that settlement agreement would go a little further than it really did. And the reason is, we all, I think we all recognize that our area is growing significantly. And it seems to me what was discussed was more of a short-term fix than a long-term fix, and that's something I'm very disappointed in. I was hoping that both bodies would also got to get together and have a discussion, and unfortunately, that did not occur. OCPS really didn't have an opportunity, except for Mr. Rodriguez, to talk from a legal standpoint. But I was hoping that both commissioners and school board representatives would talk. I've been working on this project for about six years now. It's been a long six years, and I am hopefully that this project can get completed in the near term. But I still think, though, we have some legitimate problems. The school at 2,776 kids, there's no cap on it. There's no portables. And I still don't understand why any citizen or any parent in Orange County would want their kids to be in portables. I don't get that. And I think if you, if you took a poll of all the, all the family members throughout Orange County and said to them, "Would you want your kids to be in portables?", I'm sure the answer would be no. But again, Orange County Public School didn't step up to the plate to say, "Okay, guys, we're going to limit the portables. We're going to have a mechanism in place," which I still feel is needed, not just for Orange County, West Windermere, but throughout all the schools. We, you know, I mentioned to Mr. Rodriguez a couple of months ago, I think it was, I said, "Tell me, what is the percentage of kids over the population that you would build a school?" He couldn't answer that question. And still, no one on this board can answer that question. At what number? Is it 200%? Is it 300%? Is it 600%? No one seems to answer that question. And what we had proposed was a trigger mechanism. And that trigger mechanism was say, when the school got to a certain percentage, then Orange County School Board would do a couple of things. One is build another school, or start redistricting if you couldn't do that because of budgetary constraints, putting the kids someplace else. I still feel you guys need to think about that, not just for the folks in West Orange County, but the folks all across Orange County itself. If not, we're going to go to Avalon X and other places unless we have a concrete plan on how we're going to deal with the growth, not just in West Windermere area, but also in East Orlando. And the other thing is, real quick, a lot of parents talked about there were no books in West Orange. They talked about the kids were eating lunch on the floor. I find that real hard to understand, that a group of folks like you guys, professionals, wouldn't come up with some ways to alleviate that. So if there's no books, where are taxpayers' dollars going? I mean, books are there. Maybe the kids made a mistake when they talked about no books, but basically, a lot of them talk about eating on the floor, and that needs to be addressed, because you've got two more years before you can possibly build a school. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cumberbatch. Ms. Gould.
First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Cumberbatch and, and the folks that have convened together. And while we haven't always seen eye to eye, we've had a lot of what I think are very professional and open conversations about the high school issue. And, and as he always says, we won't all, both come out happy, but hopefully, there's a little pain on both sides, and I think they're feeling a little bit more pain right now. But I also think that we, what we're about to adopt tonight also gives us some pain and accountability, and I've actually had a conversation with the parents at the school and the upcoming parents who will be at the school, to be good neighbors, and how do we ensure that this is our, a community school that we can all be proud of? And everybody, to the person so far, has been dedicated to that, and we need to put that into action as we move forward. Yes, I heard the, the comments about the books, too, and, and I know we had had a, a challenge with that at the beginning of the year, and it was addressed very early on in the year. And it was confirmed that it was addressed early on in the year, and there were books for all of the kids, and I was very relieved to find that out, that it wasn't something that was continuing. So I wanted to make sure you knew that. They were referring to something that did happen as we started the school year, but it was addressed immediately. Lunch, particularly when it rains, has been an issue, and, and they continue to, to work through that, and we are talking with facilities. But thank you for highlighting both of those issues, because you're right. We still have at least two school seasons to really work through this and, and make it as comfortable as possible in a high-growth area, and we're not going to stop seeing new kids at that school next year. It's going to even be bigger. So thank you for your time and all the energy you've put into this.
Ms. Moore.
Yes, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the comments about how the district handles overcrowding, because I have been in the process of writing a history on a school that's about to open with a new building, and, and actually went all the way back to 1840, and worked through the Orange County History Book, the Blue Book, that we're planning to, to, to continue to finish and work towards our 150th anniversary. And the one thing that stood out to me as I was writing it was, you can go back to 1880s, and it's been a continual problem to have adequate facilities and particularly to have money. So, you know, in the beginning days, it was, they were meeting in homes and churches and Masonic lodges, and if they actually got a wooden structure, they were happy. In the case of Apopka Elementary, a tornado blew their school down in 1918, and they had to find money immediately to get the, the building rebuilt. And then you get into the 1960s to 80s, and they were starting to celebrate that the state finally gave districts two mills. This was, of course, after the state got involved in trying to find equitable funding, and even that wasn't enough. I mean, they added the two mills, and yet the district was still dealing with year-round schooling, if you remember that, in the 80s, and the, and the modular campuses. And as you, as you move forward, it really, then you highlight the fact that how many referendums did previous school boards struggle with to get passed till we got to 2002. So we basically have about a 100-year history of playing catch-up, and we haven't caught up yet. It hasn't happened, and it just made me realize how grateful I am that we have this local funding. And so it, I, they're still paying. It's going to take a while to catch up, and now we're finally catching up, and the county is growing gangbusters again, and they're coming to my office with new housing projects. So the whole issue with portables and how we build, we're certainly in much better shape than we've ever been in our history, but it's not perfect, because we can't, Mr. Morris can't just wave a magic wand and have all the money all at once, and the buildings can't all go up in one year. So I just wanted to put a little perspective on, on a couple of comments that Mr. Cumberbatch said, and so I'm just grateful for this board and, and Mr. Morris, that we are actually making more headway than we have ever seen in our history to provide adequate stations that are fully equipped with the latest technology. So I just want to put that little history lesson in.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I also want to add a little bit of perspective. First of all, I want to thank the voters of Orange County, because the fact that we can even begin to meet our growth needs is largely because the voters of this county stepped up to the plate last year and renewed the half-cent sales tax. We've already looked at and have voted to approve accelerating, I'm trying to remember the number up here, Mr. Morris, the replacement of six modular schools and three, what was the other category that we accelerated? Okay, six on the what?
Reliefs.
Reliefs. So we've already accelerated six schools that were already on our relief school list and four modular schools that were in desperate need of replacement, and we stretched to do that. We, we dipped into our reserves to do that. So crowding is very, very important to this, to this board. I also want to point out that, and I know it's obvious to everybody on this board, but I want to make sure it's obvious to anybody who may be watching this or out in the audience, this has been an 18-month discussion. This was not just something that floated up at the last Board of County Commissioners meeting. We have had innumerable meetings with the county. We have had innumerable meetings with county commissioners. We have had innumerable meetings with various proponents of the school in the rural settlement. We have had numerous meetings, innumerable meetings with proponents of the school on the site that, that we own. So I think I surprise speak for many of us on this board and many in the administration when I say that nothing has consumed us as building a West Orange relief high school as much for the last 18 months as that singular topic. I do agree with something Mr. Cumberbatch said that pained me at the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and I even got a text from a, a close friend of mine who said, you know, "I'm not sure they're helping the cause, but the testimony about the lunches on the floor and the books." I want to, I want to point out two factual matters. One, that the instructional materials budget for any school is driven by the population of that school. It's an allocation on a weighted per-student number or a WFTE number, so you do not get less money per student if you have a large crowded school than you do if you have an under-populated school, because that's a pretty simple formula. Multiply the instructional materials allocation times the weighted FTE or full-time, weighted full-time equivalent students in that school. So there's no shortage of resources there. What happened with West Orange this year is not uncommon in a rapidly growing county, which is that oftentimes, when we have unexpected population surges show up at the school on the first day of school, we have to reallocate resources to that school from other schools, and that's something we have to do every year. I think what also played into that issue a little bit as well is, is we are converting to digital technology and digital textbooks. So I think that as parents become adjusted to the fact that, you know, Johnny and Judy are no longer going to necessarily get a textbook for every subject, that much of their instructional materials will be on a digital device. It's been an adjustment. I will be candid with you, it's been an adjustment in my household, and I think probably for other parents as well, but I think that leads to some of the confusion about textbooks. With regard to something else Mr. Cumberbatch said, projections, and these are not hard and fast projections, and although we do a pretty good job in our demographic department of projecting population growth, we do not expect that school to hit its permanent program capacity until sometime around 2024 or '25, if not later. And those are very, very conservative projections. So kids will not be starting school in portables at that school, and if anything, it will be a number of years. We hope as many as seven years at a minimum, as many as nine or 10, till we start to hit that point. We do, the last thing I'm going to say, and then I'll, and then I'll bring it in for a landing, is, and this is an important point for me to make sure the public understands, we do plan for growth. We plan and publish, and publish in conjunction with the, with the county, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, and in conjunction with the capital improvement plan, an annual capital improvement plan that is adopted by the county, where we do project out growth, and we do say what schools we are building in the next 10 years. Last time I looked, don't quote me on this, but I think there's 16 schools on the current capital improvement plan list. That is somewhat dictated by revenue. We back into that number a little bit. We do not always necessarily have the revenue coming in that we need to meet all our needs, but we do aggressively bond out our revenue streams so we can accelerate as much as we can where possible. And of course, our revenue, that half-cent sales tax, we don't get all $2 billion in one tranche in one year. That's going to come in over the next 10 years in 10 tranches, and we will build as fast as we can, and that's why we most recently accelerated. This too shall pass. Many of y'all have heard me say this in speeches on the stump. I went to the most crowded high school in the state of Florida when I was in high school. We were on double session the entire four years I was there, meaning half the school went from 7:00 in the morning till noon, the other half came in at 12:30 and went 12:30 to 5:30. I think there were 1,100 kids in my graduating class, which back then was very, very big, and would still probably be the largest in Orange County today. I will say, there is a rainbow at the end of that story, and that is- We plan and publish, and publish in conjunction with the county, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, and in conjunction with the capital improvement plan, an annual capital improvement plan that is adopted by the county, where we do project out growth, and we do say what schools we are building in the next 10 years. Last time I looked, don't quote me on this, but I think there's 16 schools on the current capital improvement plan list. That is somewhat dictated by revenue. We back into that number a little bit. We do not always necessarily have the revenue coming in that we need to meet all our needs, but we do aggressively bond out our revenue streams so we can accelerate as much as we can where possible. And of course, our revenue, that half-cent sales tax, we don't get all $2 billion in one tranche in one year. That's going to come in over the next 10 years in 10 tranches, and we will build as fast as we can, and that's why we most recently accelerated. This too shall pass. Many of y'all have heard me say this in speeches on the stump. I went to the most crowded high school in the state of Florida when I was in high school. We were on double session the entire four years I was there, meaning half the school went from 7:00 in the morning till noon, the other half came in at 12:30 and went 12:30 to 5:30. I think there were 1,100 kids in my graduating class, which back then was very, very big, and would still probably be the largest in Orange County today. I will say, there is a rainbow at the end of that story, and that is that, that was Pinellas County. Pinellas County, in the last decade, decade and a half, has actually been a declining enrollment county for public school population. If you're a sports fan, that same school, which was the largest school in the state at the time reputedly, is now, you know, we have 8A classifications in sports, it's now, I think, a 5A school. So today, that same school that was once very overcrowded, and that's very true of most Pinellas County schools, almost all their schools are, except in a few rare exceptions, 5A, 6A schools in the sports classification, which is to tell you that for a highly urban county, it finally got built out, and it finally hit capacity, and that growth moved elsewhere. We'll get there, but I think we're going to experience this for the next 12 to 15 years, and maybe even longer, until Orange County finally gets to that point. So, thank you, Mr. Cumberbatch. You have been a wonderful advocate for the rural settlement. You've been very professional to work with and deal with, and I know it's been a tough issue that we've worked on together for the last 18 months, but you've always been a real gentleman to deal with, and I want to thank you for that personally. Thank you. All right, with that, anything else, folks, on the consent agenda before I take a motion to adopt it? I do want to make one special recognition on the consent agenda. Somebody very special is here with us tonight, Sana Merk. Sana is the new chair of the Construction Oversight and Value Engineering Committee, or what we call our COV Committee. And Sana, stand up and let us, I'll give you a round of applause for Chairman Jeff. And that handsome gentleman next to Sana is her husband, Dr. Merk, who is the chief financial officer at UCF, and somebody well-known to us as well. Dr. Merk, thank you so much for lending us Sana this last year and a half, two years. All right, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I was actually waiting for the consent agenda to pass, so I could officially welcome our new chairperson, because she wouldn't be able to change her mind at that point. We also have two additional COV members being added, because we had some retirements. They were unable to be here tonight. We'll meet you at a separate time, but we are delighted at her expertise. She is well-able and well-respected among that group to chair it, and on top of her day job, always gives her time freely. We like to remind people, COV members are unpaid positions, so thank you in advance for your service, and thanks to your husband for lending us to you in your spare time.
All right, board members, I don't have any other speakers on the consent agenda. Can I entertain a motion to approve it? Been moved by Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Moore. Is there any debate or discussion on the consent agenda? Saying none. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right, Dr. Jenkins. And my forgiveness, or my apologies, Dr. Fritz, for missing you on the strategic plan. Let me turn it over to you, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. As you well remember, we do our unitary sta-- let me just give a brief pause for folks that are departing. All right, as you are well aware, board members, we do our strategic plan updates on our unitary status settlement agreement in segments, so that they roll up into a final report. It is that time of year that we will give you your update for extracurricular activities, reporting under Dr. Scott Fritz, our chief academic officer.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent. It's my pleasure to be here today to talk about the extracurricular portion of the settlement agreement. As a requirement of the settlement agreement for extracurricular activities, it's imperative that we identify the tryouts for each school site in the middle and high schools, and allow the parents and the community to know when those dates are. I'm very, very pleased to report that since we've been doing this, every year, we've had 100% of our schools in compliance with the requirements. Part of the requirements are that we have to keep a website matrix that can be accessed through the school site, as well as keep written lists at the school that go home in the newsletter and other communications. So the parents understand about the tryouts and about the requirements of the agreement. We did two Connect Oranges. We did those back in August, August 4th and August 21st, to let parents know that they can access these resources, so that they can find out when those extracurricular tryouts will be made available and the times and the locations for their students. In addition to that, we put a statement in the code of conduct that provided these resources, so that parents knew how to access them. And as we've done in the past, this is a very easy process. If a parent's interested, they can go to our main district website, hit the community tab, go down and click on the extracurricular activities on the left-hand side, hit the addition sign to open the school name and views the activities. On that list, it'll give the actual sponsor of the club, the dates of the tryouts, and it gives parents a lot of information. So if you're on the school website and you weren't at the district website, you could go directly to the school website and click on extracurricular activities, and the same matrix that would pop up on the district website will pop up there. And this is just an example of one of our matrix. You can see this is Piedmont Lakes. And on the far right-hand side, if you look from my angle, you'll see the actual tryout dates. The next column has the sponsors, and again, the school and what the event is, those on the far left. And this is one for Lake Nona High School. And this is actually an example of a written list for our middle schools. And here's one for our written list for Edgewater High School. And we'll tell you, there's been a designated person at each site, and we've done this since this policy's been acted, that sends their written list and their activities to our athletic director, who keeps them on file. We have gone from paper files to keeping them on the computer, and we have them in zip drive, but we have them available to anybody who wants them. We're very excited about a project that we're launching. We're working very feverishly to try to develop an app that parents could also access us on, and will be available for the beginning of next school year. But these are the dates in which we review and collect the information from our school sites. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Chief Academic Officer Scott Fritz. We are certainly available to answer any questions you might have or hear your discussion. It's pretty straightforward. This is probably the simplest and easiest of the unitary status requirements for us to comply with. I'd like to remind folks, our settlement agreement is voluntary monitoring on our part. We are no longer under jurisdiction or monitoring from the court system, but this board agreed to voluntarily monitor and regularly report out to the community various areas of that settlement agreement, and so that is certainly commendable. We will continue to bring these reports to you.
With that in mind, any board members, any comments with Dr. Fritz? Complimentary remarks, since they work so hard? Yeah, you got a hand clap, which is good, from Nancy. Okay, with that in mind, Dr. Jenkins, would you like any additional information you want to add to the agenda?
No, for my report items, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Thank you. I wanted to, I mentioned in pre-agenda, certainly wanted to mention for the general public that the governor did sign HB 7069 today. We are pleased at some of the provisions in that actual legislation, as promised. You will recall, we made some decisions, preliminary decisions, to cut back on some of our testing, because we felt quite confident that we were going to move in this direction, and so we did not want to expend dollars to create additional EOCs. This is the actual legislation that we were confident about, felt good about making that decision. I will tell you, we are pleased that there will be a review, at least for the validity issues and reliability issues around that testing, before there's any releasing of grades. We think that is prudent on the legislature and the governor's part as well. We're pleased with that. Pleased to have fewer tests. When it comes to the actual earlier start date for schools, in case anyone asks you, we are specifically making sure we reconvene our calendar committee. I will tell you in general, the opinion is it's probably a bit late in timing to change our start date for parents and for people that make plans for their summer, but just out of a sense of being consistent, we will reconvene our calendar committee and let them have that discussion officially before we bring anything back to you. And then, lastly, I wanted to mention, one board member noticed in a board update that we have some documents there around how we're going to try to schedule elementary schools for next year. Want to reassure you again, as we promised, that we will continue to look at potential for recess minutes in our schedules, especially on days when children don't have physical education, but with some flexibility and responsibility left at the school level rather than mandated. As we promised, we'll bring you back a report in June, but you may hear about it, because schools are working around those models for their scheduling as we speak. And honestly, I think the biggest improvement will be that we have 11 different models that we're trying to get all 123 elementary schools to try to fit into, because previously we had discustomized models for virtually every school. A better practice for a system our size, for our FTE reporting and our auditing, is to have some templates and some models that they can use. So you may hear discussions around instructional minutes and different templates that are being offered, because they're working on scheduling for next year. I wanted to reassure you, we will still bring you a report in June, once the dust settles. We believe you'll be pleased that we've been able to squeeze those minutes for you.
Very powerful report. We want to thank you for that. Dr. Jenkins, I need to ask something, since it was 12.07, was on the consent agenda, but I think that I will need the general counsel, you and Ms. Flynn, to address that for the public, for us, the naming of the school because of the ballots that went out. And I did speak with our general counsel in reference to the withdrawing of the trademark restriction, so I need to find out from Ms. Flynn, and this board needs to find out from the superintendent and general counsel, where do we stand? Do you want Ms. Flynn to go, since it's her area and worked on her community, and see what she would like to bring to the table?
Let me confer just a moment, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay, and get your thoughts. Well, only, the only thing that had been withdrawn was the trademark restriction, and that's it, and that's on 12.07.
Okay. Madam Chair, you are so adept at reviewing the agenda. So, Mrs. Flynn, let me ask you if you're ready to make a recommendation to the board, because we do need to go back over that.
Superintendent, I am, and I should have caught it, that it was on the consent.
I apologize for that.
I'm so concerned about what it said, but I think the area superintendent will present.
Yes, let me ask our parliamentary, and how we go about getting that to non-consent at this point.
Just procedurally, I think just need to make a motion to reconsider item 12.07, second it and approve that motion to reconsider, and then take it up as a non-consent item. So I think you're making a motion to--
Thank you, I do. Board members, fellow board members and Chair, I do make a motion that we reconsider item 12.07.
Okay, board members, you've heard the reconsideration of the vote. What is your pleasure? All in favor of the reconsideration?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? We have it, it is on the floor for reconsideration. Ms. Flynn, or the superintendent, or general counsel, might want to give us something from your direction, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So now that it is under reconsideration, we'll follow our standard procedure, and I apologize to Board Member Flynn for not catching that earlier. We had such other items that sort of had our attention, and I overlooked it. And so here is our normal procedure, it would be under non-consent, which we are going to consider separately now. Area Superintendent Dr. Vasquez can actually walk us through where we stand with the community's recommendations, and then Board Member Flynn will give us her recommendation. Keep in mind, we ask school communities to come up with two or three possibilities, but the school board has the authority to deem and term a final determination of a name for the school. With that, Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Superintendent Jenkins. The naming of a school is selected by the school board. The superintendent shall submit three names that are a direct result of community involvement. In the case of 41-E-SE-2, the following process was used to select names for submission to the board. An initial survey was sent home to all students, soliciting suggestions via paper survey or email for names of the school. The information was also advertised on the school's Facebook page and the Connect Orange message system. A total of 108 surveys were returned. A school naming ballot with five names was sent to the school's community stakeholders March 11th of this year. There were advertisements on the school's Facebook page, monthly electronic newsletter, and the Connect Orange message system. Votes were submitted to the schools or emailed through March 18th. 326 surveys were returned. The top three are as follows. Eagle Creek Elementary received 93 votes, which represents 29%. This name was suggested because the school is located in the Eagle Creek community. Nona Creek Elementary received 49 votes, which represents 15%. This name was suggested because the students who will be attending the school live in the Lake Nona and Eagle Creek communities. Lake Nona Elementary received 156 votes, which represents 48%. This name was suggested because the school is located in the Lake Nona area and will feed to Lake Nona Middle School and Lake Nona High School. Due to trademark restrictions, the name Lake Nona Elementary has been eliminated. That was the process that was followed, and the recommendations to the board.
With that in mind, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Can we refer it over to Ms. Flynn for her motion, if it's time, if you have, well, for your recommendation?
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. And I just wanted to say that our principal for the new school is out there, Rob McClell, so he's out there waiting anxiously to hear what the final outcome. And I also must say that what a pleasure to name a school that is so desired, that is so wanted, that was just from start to finish, you know, like clockwork. But based on what the results were from the surveys, it's very obvious to me that the name should be Eagle Creek Elementary School, and therefore, I do make a motion that, based on the highest vote, or the name receiving the highest vote, is that school 41-E-SE-2 be named Eagle Creek Elementary School.
It has been properly moved and seconded, that the new school be named Eagle Creek Elementary, receiving 93, which is 29% of the vote. This name was suggested because the school is located in the Eagle Creek community. The school board representative for that district is recommending it. It has been seconded by Mrs. Kittle. What is the pleasure of this board? Yes, question?
Mrs. Flynn, can you explain, is there actually truly an Eagle Creek, or do any of these names have geographic or historical connotations?
Ms. Moore, yes. Actually, it is within the Eagle Creek development, and that is a very, very large development. Eventually, it will probably, that school will probably only encompass the neighborhood of Eagle Creek. Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's within the Eagle Creek development. Yes, and then our future plans call for a future school across the street, which would be in the Lake Nona development, and hence, the reason why that name was withdrawn, because it is trademarked. Lake Nona, we think of that whole area out there, but it's really a development.
Okay, with that in mind, your heart satisfied with that, Mrs. Moore? Mr. Rodriguez, have you heard anything from Ms. Colbert? Will she be able to cast a vote?
I think she's still on the line, on the call, but--
Can you text her? Oh, Lord, I'm scared to death for you to text her.
I am on the line, Mrs. Gordon.
Okay. Are there any other discussion? Hang in there, we're almost there. Okay, Ms. Colbert, are there any other discussion on the naming of the new school? Hearing none? You have heard the motion? You've heard the discussion? All those in favor of the motion, coming from Darryl Flynn, the representative of that? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed--
Aye.
All right. You have now named your school. It is unanimous, okay?
Eagle Creek.
Coming from this board. The school is now named officially Eagle Creek Elementary, and we thank you, Ms. Flynn, for all your hard work, and we thank that community-- for all your hard work, and we thank that community. Anyone from the community is, are you out there?
Principal.
Yeah, well, I was gonna let Dr. Jenkins do that for us, okay? And Mrs. Flynn, well, that means you all must have done a good job, a great job. So Dr. Jenkins, will you please introduce us to the new principal of Eagle Creek Elementary? And thank you, board members, and thank you, Ms. Colbert.
Do you want to introduce him?
Rob McClellan, stand up, he will be the new principal of Eagle Creek Elementary School.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Gordon, I do want to say that it has been a lot of fun watching the school develop with the new principal, and he's going to have a teacher signing day coming up, where all the new teachers sign, he's gonna have it in two phases, and I think that's a really fun team-building exercise. He's got a Facebook that he regularly posts, who's been hired, and they're doing a, Mrs. Moore, you'll like this, a school beautification project, so I just, my hats off to the principal, you're doing a fabulous job, and I'm excited, I'm excited about it, so thank you.
All right, well, welcome aboard, and we as a board and the superintendent, on behalf of the entire staff, we welcome you, you're not a stranger to us, and let's give him a round of applause. With that in mind, our next report is coming from our school district general counsel, Mr. Rodriguez.
I'm glad to announce, board members, we have no executive sessions over the next two weeks, so, but we do have one more school that is gonna go back before the county commission next week, and that's Ms. Flynn's Avalon Middle School relief, so if you need updates on that, please get with me afterwards. The school board will have, now that the settlement has been approved, there will be the quasi-judicial hearing scheduled for, I believe, May 5th, we'll get confirmation of that, but I do want to thank you all for your support these last few weeks between Wedgefield and the Beck property, and now Avalon, so, thank you.
We thank you so very much for that. And now we will move to our school board reports. If you have, I think, Ms. Robinson, you have one?
I don't have a report, I want to have a pause.
Okay, Ms. Cadel, were you going to give a report?
No.
Okay, and Ms. Moore, I think you had a report. And then Ms. Flynn, legislative update.
Yes, Madam Chair, we had a communications meeting today, and the first part was just a wonderful discussion that centered around Dr. Pope's staff and a project that they're working very closely with, former school board member Linda Sutherland, to have mommy, what do we come up with the name, mommy packs, or mommy packs for all new mothers of babies born in Orange County? And if you all would like to have a little factoid about how many babies are born in this wonderful county every year, it is about 17,000. So we had a vigorous discussion, and I know we'll return to discuss that further, because there was great interest on the board on that issue. We also talked at length about the upcoming dinner that we have, tell me the name again.
Hall of Fame.
I don't know why, it just doesn't stick in my head, Hall of Fame, because we...
Yes.
Years, yes, she's got, yeah, right, the program's sitting right here. Yes, celebrating 145 years of Orange County public school history with our inductees. Would you like to read those as well, Mrs. Ghul?
I would be happy to read that. We have Dick Bachelor from Evans High School, class of 1966, Johnny Damon from Dr. Phillips High School, class of 1992, Erica Dunlop, the Miss America, from Boone High School, class of 2000, and Harris Rosen, a significant philanthropist and lover of children, John Young, we know there's a road name after him, but he was kind of a famous astronaut that did multiple missions, class, I'm sorry, Orlando High, class of 1948, and a wonderful educator, James Chief Wilson of Jones and Evans High School for, and he serves 40 years in our system.
And I believe the event is on May 15th at the Rosen Shingle Creek, and so we did have a discussion about trying to ensure that we have a full house that night, because it's such an important event.
Tickets are available at www.halloffame ocps.net. I'm the foundation board member, and I felt the need to make sure everybody could access those tickets.
That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
I feel excellent report, and we thank Mrs. Ghul for helping you there. Ms. Colbert, did you have any comments in reference to that?
No, I'm good, thank you, Mrs. Gordon.
All righty, okay, moving right along, we are moving into our non-action committee for those, oh no, I have Darryl Flynn, that's action.
We don't have any active events with the legislative committee, but I do want to say that there are some very, very important and critical bills that are going through the legislature right now, and they are ones that could definitely impact school districts, district transfers from, from one county to another, that's really getting some legs. You've got athletics, sport, competition sports, changes with the governing body for, you know, high school sports, so there are quite a few things going on, be sure to pay attention to, and I know you do, be sure to read, I should say, Scott Howard's wrap-ups, and, you know, there might be a day in the next couple of weeks that we need to take a trip up there and do some discussing, discussing with some of our legislators, because these are bills that definitely have an impact. Funding of charter schools, you know, they're looking at taking another chunk out of our funds to help charter schools, so there are some very, very important bills that we need to keep an eye on.
Ms. Flynn, I believe you have a question coming from Ms. Robinson.
Well, I don't, I don't know if Ms. Flynn's the person to answer, but I just, in reference to your comments, Dr. Jenkins, that you made earlier about the bill that, the accountability bill that did get signed by the governor today, I would, I would love some kind of, once we've had time to really analyze it, what exactly is in there? I mean, every detail, like what exactly does it say about less tests, and what it means for us, what's the true impact gonna be, so we can get that information out? Thank you.
Very good comment.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me make one quick comment on that, if you would. So I'd like for folks to understand, there's been no extreme overhaul and elimination of tests, there is language around, for example, that you will not exceed a certain percentage of testing when you count all of your instructional minutes. By our calculations, we believe we're already well under that number. Another major item is that you will not give a final exam along with an EOC exam, and this board already approved that as well. I think the third, and we'll get, we're gonna get you the analysis in writing, but I wanted to make these three points clear. The third item is around the notion of having to provide additional tests, where not really necessary to tie to individual teachers. We made that movement when we took away the social studies and the science and the art, music, and PE test for kindergarten through fourth grade in our elementary schools, so those are major items, but this board has been proactive and in support that we've already pretty much covered those areas. But we're gonna get you an analysis, so you can easily speak to it with bullets.
Very good, Superintendent Jenkins, and I'm glad that Ms. Robinson brought that up, and that Ms. Flynn asked us to pay attention. There is one other item that I heard on the news coming out of the door today on ABC, and it was our local ABC station, and they mentioned the grades. So will you kind of address that for us about the school grades? Because I know parents are concerned about that, the realtors are concerned about that, and the teachers, and principals, and administrators, and the board.
Absolutely, Madam Chair, and we will certainly include that in the brief analysis for board members to be able to handle. We were hoping for a pause or a delay in recalculation of school grades, because you won't have growth data. If you use purely proficiency data, we know that will hurt some of our schools significantly. We were hoping for the pause, it did not happen. What we did hear, what we did get in that actual language, is that there will be a review of the validity of the testing, because when you have writing tests where students are off and on the computer, some see the prompts ahead of time, some don't see the prompts, some have their work lost, and then they work at a very swift speed, trying not to get bumped off the next day. We believe there are some validity issues around that, and that will have to be determined by an outside party, Senate President, yeah, the Senate President, the House, I was gonna say House President, that's not the right, Speaker of the House and the Governor, the three of them have to agree on an outside entity, some professionals who will actually look at our testing and determine whether or not it's even valid data this first year. We believe it's baseline data, an outside entity will have to agree that it is valid information before they issue any kind of grades, and so that's, that's somewhat of a compromise that we are pleased about. Didn't get everything we wanted, but we're pleased at least to have an outside entity take a look at all of that information before they try to calculate grades.
Very good, and I do believe Ms. Cadel wants to address a portion of that also, go ahead, Ms. Cadel.
I was in Tallahassee last week, and the committee that is supposed to look at FSA and whatever, that the school boards association has one seat on it, the 11 or 13 people that DOE were putting together, that meeting, that committee will not start meeting until June.
Very good.
They've had an initial phone conference call, but nothing will be done on that committee that the Governor agreed to look at until starting in June.
Thank you so much, all of the committee reports, my committee report, Community Action Board, I think I just overwhelmed you this week, because it was so much going on, they are so happy about you all, you have a separate entity report, and they really want us to mix with the community centers, and you see a list of the centers in your area, they ask that you please support this, okay? And then, of course, the Nashville, the new president is Mr. Tuttle, and he sent you the little scarves in the booth, you know, their little country, and it's okay, and you got a little bit of chocolate. Last year you got candy from New York, so this time we got a little chocolate from Oklahoma. It is excellent, I just want to sing out, oh, but I can't do that, but I would love to just sing that out, but you all would make me be quiet. But the main thing is that our FSBA meeting is coming up, and I didn't know if Joey or Pam, or Ms. Robinson wanted to come in on that, and I think Ms. Colbert is the alternate. I think we all are going to FSBA the end of this month?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I mean, June, this summer, we'll be going in June, they're asking us to get everything in, so we don't want to miss that. I think we all try to make that one. With that in mind, yes, go right ahead.
As a member of the executive committee?
Yes.
I have, I am on the selection committee for, for Executive Director Wayne Blanton's replacement. We had our first round of interviews in Tallahassee last week, and one of the things that came out loud and clear from our days in the legislature is Florida School Boards Association will be choosing a strategic planning organization to take us through a strategic plan of what is, what does FSBA look like in the future? Where do we want to be five years from now? The belief of the executive committee and the selection committee is that we are in the perfect time to set a vision and to have a strategic roadmap for our new executive director. I'll be going back to Tallahassee on Sunday for a second round of interviews with three candidates, and at that point, at the end of those three interviews, we probably will start in negotiations, make a selection, to make a recommendation to the membership at the June Board of Directors meeting. One of the things that will happen is there will be a breakout session on Thursday for board members, or all, you know, all members of FSBA to go into a facilitated discussion of where do we want FSBA to go, so that will be the beginning of the discussion. There will also be the opportunity to do a SWOT analysis, and we'll be putting up flip charts going into the main meeting areas, so people can put what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, what are, what the threats are to us, and what the opportunities are. And then the goal, I'm on a conference call for that on Thursday, to select who this person will be, or this organization. At that time, the keynote speaker on Thursday will be the strategic planner to talk about the process and why it's important for boards to have a strategic plan, and there is some legislation going through the legislature right now that's going to require all school boards to have strategic plans, which, you know, we go, we work so hard from ours that it's amazing that some school boards don't have them, but that is legislation that's making its way through. So the strategic planner will be there to hear all the conversations, see all the dialogue and everything, and the goal is to have the strategic plan ready to be presented to the Board of Directors for ratification at the December Board of Directors meeting. The strategic planner will be at the president's retreat to work with the Board of Directors once again on it. So we have heard loud and clear that we need to decide who FSBA is and where we're going, and so that is the report that I come back with.
Very good, and I'm glad that we were able to add that FSBA report. I think Ms. Ghul wants to add additional, and also Ms. Flynn. And Ms. Cadel, I think we all have received our packages, and we are very appreciative that you continue in the dilemma of when the election took place, you were able to weather the storm and kind of help to glue it together, and serving on that nominated committee, that meant a lot, because we know the type of work that it takes to go in there, and we thank you for being there, and thank goodness you had the experience that would help to carry FSBA forward, because when you lose your president and your, your next in line, president-elect, that is really a lot. So with that in mind, we thank you for your hard work there, and also Ms. Robinson and Ms. Ghul, and Ms. Colbert, and Ms. Flynn, all of us are there, all of us have served on the Board of Directors, and we feel that everybody needs to get an opportunity. And I think we all stayed up late nights trying to bring back everything, and Orange County is on top of it, and we have our own director. We don't have to share our director with any other county, and I think that that's a plus factor for us. So with that in mind, Ms. Ghul, then Ms. Flynn, and then Ms. Moore. No, Robinson's fine.
She's, she's the clicker lady. My thing is not a report, but a review that I would like to request some discussion and some workshop, and I have run against a grassroots group that wanted to name a portion of a school for a beloved retired leader and teacher. And because of our sponsorship policy being written the way that it is, they're having trouble doing that, even though they feel that that doesn't preclude the sponsorship, so I wanted to request a workshop where we could review those sponsorships again, and just make sure we're not in conflict with our community, or if there is a way to negotiate some balance there, or maybe it doesn't make sense, but I'd like to get the entire board's kind of conversation on that, and get it refreshed. I do remember when I first came on the board, that policy being presented, and kind of the thought process behind it, and I can read it, but I'd like to hear some of the thought and discussion and research that went into that again, and I think it would be, who've, Ms. Colbert, to also hear?
Okay, with Ms. Ghul, with that in mind, can I let you hear from the superintendent, because several of us helped to kind of work on that, and it was a lot of work, and the purpose was that, because I have so many in my community that want to do exactly what you're talking about, and if we did not follow those procedures as closely as we could, then it would really open up a can of worm and cause a lot of dissension in my community. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Jenkins to address it, because I've had to take that to her within the month. Every month I have to take her something of that nature, because everybody's coming up, you know why? School Board District 5 didn't have any new buildings. We didn't have not one. The newest building was in 67, and Katie wasn't on the board, and nor was I. The newest building was in '67, and Katie wasn't on the board and nor was I. And that was Orange Center being built. And then I came in the next year as a librarian in '68. And it has really been something because now everybody that was back there in the '60s, they see Washington Shores, they see Eccleston, and I took Dr. Jenkins a stack of people that the principal and nobody knows, but they want the school named after those people. So I'm going to let Dr. Jenkins address it, but you have a very good point, and maybe her staff might work that out, and then, or you might get with them. But I'm going to ask her and see what's what because we spent so much time on that in the committee.
This is stadium and.
Oh, yes.
Stadium and auditorium and all that.
Girl, don't go there. Don't even bring up the stadium, okay? All right. So, Dr. Jenkins, do the best you can on this for us.
I'm happy to speak to it, Ms. Gould. Couple of things I think are critical in the discussion, and you're right, it was before you came on the board, and certainly Ms. Colbert would need to be privy to that as well because you get those kinds of requests. And all well-meaning, I assure you, we're not the least bit offended that people want some memorialization of their work here, but we have a lot of retirees. And so what the board did at the time that the policy was established, we were being very aggressive. It was before Brian left us. We were being very aggressive at selling naming rights and trying to protect some of that inventory for naming rights that would bring in revenue to our schools. So stadiums, performing arts centers, larger portion of the school were reserved as an inventory for naming rights by design. We wanted to be able to market and have Nemours pay for naming rights. Another entity paid for naming rights at Wakava, and Nemours was at Lake Nona. And we had a very aggressive plan going because we had a wonderful talent here that was selling that inventory aggressively. And so the board agreed we would reserve those particular entities for our naming rights inventory. You can't put your name on those particular entities unless you pay some money to get those naming rights. At the same time, we still allowed for media centers or cafeterias to be named in memory of some folks. But keep in mind, again, we have so many retirees, their requests would just be significant. And so what we put in place to be able to manage it is here are the criteria. If someone is asking to name a media center after a retired principal, for example, it starts with the school's SAC. They bring their presentation there. The SAC decides whether or not they want to pursue it. And then there's a checklist that you have to go through when they're considering that so everybody will be consistent. Checklist says what exactly has been their contribution to the district? What have they done since their retirement? Who's going to pay for the signage? All of that is on that checklist so that the school board is not taking on a burden of memorializing every retiree that we name something after. So it's school-driven. The SAC has to be behind it, and then they gather input and an agreement from their community, and then we move forward. Otherwise, they would just go directly to board members, saying, "I'd like to name this after so-and-so," or "We'd like to name this after so-and-so." We make sure they go through their SAC for anything that's not on that reserved inventory that we still believe we can get dollars for. And then they go through that process, almost like a school naming, they go through that process with their SAC. So the community is in support of it, and they don't all come back and say, "We never wanted to rename our cafeteria or our media center." It's very similar to the naming process that the SAC drives for us. And then it comes to the school board, and the school board still has the ability, just as you did, as Ms. Flynn did a moment ago with naming the school, they bring that recommendation to the board, and the board has the ability to vote it up or down. A lot of thought and process went into cleaning up what was getting to be very messy and very individualized based on who was making the request. And so we're pleased with that. Whether or not it's weighty enough or meaty enough to make a work session around is probably questionable. However, if there needs to be a review of the policy, or if this board would like to consider amending their policy, we're certainly open to hear that discussion as well.
Okay, thank you. With that in mind, Ms. Flynn.
I have your back.
No, I think we better go ahead because we don't want to be in debate on it. That is something I think that you probably could also meet with Dr. Jenkins and give her some ideas. Yes, okay. Okay, well, I'm not going, I have you on for after Ms. Robinson, okay?
Me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, with Ms. Gould, I want to say I agree because I've had a similar request, and I couldn't find the information. So I don't know where the list is, but at least I think it needs to be a little bit more detailed. I have two things. As was mentioned, we go before the county commissioners on Tuesday, April 21st at 2:00 PM to have a relief school for Avalon Middle approved for OCPS-owned property. We're asking for a change in land use from an elementary site to a middle school site. I just want to let everyone know that I support this site. It is the best one for us to build in. We've had questions, I've had questions about, well, why don't we go to this site? Why don't we go to that site? One of those sites, you know, five acres of it is submerged, you know, underwater. So we have looked at many, many sites, and this one remains the best one and the most timely one. I did give everyone a Q and A sheet, and thank you. I would ask that you review it, and I hope that you'll be there on Tuesday so that we can be a united front. So if you have any questions, if you want to, if you don't know where it is that I gave it to you, it is on my website, the OCPS School Board, our page. So it's there, and it really is pretty comprehensive, but, you know, I still keep getting questions. So then the next sort of, it's not policy level, but it is, I guess it is, in regard to our school advisory councils, I'm getting more and more questions where there's sort of inconsistencies between the schools and, you know, where somebody will read this, that it's supposed to include this, and they're not, principals aren't giving it, and this, we want this to have a committee. I know we review that every year, but I wanted to also say, if we can be a little bit more, I guess, prescriptive to our principals, and you're probably already doing it, but what the SACs are supposed to do. I know I have one SAC participant, she wants to see the budget. That's supposed to be one of the, you know, the school budgets, one of the things I remember anyway, that you're supposed to review it, review it, and that's not happening. So I did want to say if we could have a little bit more of a refresher on the responsibilities of the SACs and what's included. That's it.
Well, great. Dr. Jenkins, you have those two issues? Thank you so very much. With that in mind, Ms. Christine Moore.
I wanted to bring before the board an idea for a policy. And I've had preliminary discussions with the superintendent about it. In the process of, and I chair the committee for the 145th anniversary with the Hall of Fame, and during that process, we've had a previous conversation about updating the district's history book. And I've been working extensively, trying to personally write some of the histories on schools in my district. And I wanted to request a policy to be developed if it meets approval of the rest of the board to start beginning to collect certain standard stock items so that we could have a repository for all the information. When you start going back to do the history, our book, there's items missing, and I know Dylan Thomas, and I think, I think she went as well, went to meet with the Orange County history people, and I've been down at my local museum. And so it has been proving to be problematic. There are vast holes. And so I just wanted to see, Mr. Rodriguez, if it meets the approval of the rest of the board, if we could develop a very simple policy for our schools to start collecting whatever this board would choose, pictures, history with them, the building is put up and those sorts of things so that we could certainly be able to share that with future generations. And Mrs. Gordon, you and I have some schools. I've got a Popkale Elementary getting ready to celebrate 100 years, so it was quite a task trying to find all the data. So I thought within 20 years, every building in this county will be rebuilt courtesy of these wonderful taxpayers. It'd be nice if, for future generations, we didn't make that task so difficult.
Thank you so very much. With that in mind, yes, go ahead, Madam Superintendent.
I was going to mention, it occurred to me, and Ms. Moore did mention this to me earlier, I appreciated the forenotice of her recommendation. Let me get with General Counsel, determine whether or not policy or potentially management directive would be more effective for something like that. We'll work on that and bring something back to the board.
Very good. Thank you. With that in mind, Ms. Nancy Robinson, and then Ms. Gould.
Thank you. I have two things. Mr. Rodriguez, you mentioned that we don't have any work sessions in the next few weeks. I did see one on May 5th. Is that one still there? Does that stay, or do we need to delete that one from our calendar?
We should have no need for any executive sessions.
So I can delete that one. Just trying to free up the calendar. It's a busy time of year with school programs and award ceremonies and stuff. Okay, so I'll delete that May 5th one. Thank you. And I just want to bring an idea to the board that I've been discussing with the superintendent too, and I'm not sure it needs to rise to the level of a policy, but it potentially does. And it's kind of tricky one. Cell phone use on our school campuses, in particular middle and high school. I've had many teachers and principals say to me recently, they're out of control. And I think because they've grown so much, there's, every child now has a smartphone, every child now, whether they're on our Wi-Fi or not, they all have 4G. They can get on any website they can at any moment. And so the superintendent did a quick survey of the high school policies just to see what their policies are, and they all have differing policies. Some say you have to, you can't have them all on at all during the day, you know, you have to turn them off in the morning before school starts, can't turn them back on. Some say you can have them during lunch. Some say you can have them before school and after school and during lunch. Some say in between classes. All of them tend, seem to want to limit them during the actual class period unless they're being used for educational purposes. The problem everyone's finding is the students aren't doing that. They're not adhering to their specific school's policy. And the principals and administrators and teachers and everyone, they're spending so much time. These children are not paying attention. They're not learning. They're Snapchatting, they're Instagramming, they're texting, they're Facebooking, they're web searching, they're game playing. They're doing everything but paying attention in class, and I think we're actually going to lose a lot of our students. And I think they're addicted to these cell phones. So it's kind of a tricky one in that I don't know how we're going to manage it. It's kind of gotten out of control. So Dr. Jenkins and her staff are investigating it. We're going to do a little more research. I can speak personally to my son and my mentee, both juniors in high school, and they're both boys. The most emails that I get from their teachers, they're on their cell phone. They can't, they, my son, the first two nine weeks, he had his cell phone. We no longer let him take it to school. His grades have skyrocketed. It's amazing what will happen in AP Calculus when you're actually paying attention, you know, if you're not on your cell phone. And I just don't know if the students are mature, there's some, but I'm not sure they're mature enough to put it away. And the teachers, yes, you're right, we don't put them away. So I just think it's time that we look at it and really figure out how to deal with it because I think, I can tell you, our most at-risk students have them and are not paying attention, and they're the ones that really, you know, I mean, all of our students need to be learning. But I think the ones that we're all desperately trying to reach are the, are ones that they're not paying attention in class. And it's just so disappointing. So I, I think it's time we try and figure that out and deal with it. I don't know how we're going to deal with it. I wish the parents would help us. I can tell you, my son has survived fine for nine weeks, all the last nine weeks, and half of this one, he leaves it at the kitchen counter. He doesn't get it till he gets home. He hasn't needed me. If he did, he could go to a phone in the office. We still have real landlines. If I need him, I can email the teacher, I could call the school. Yeah, it's amazing. Life has gone on, yes. Well, he can borrow his friends, he has done that. So I'm just.
It was his phone.
I'm just saying, it's not like he's died without his cell phone and his grades have skyrocketed. So just want to let y'all know that's coming along. Thank you.
And thank you. I know that, Dr. Jenkins, I know you're going to look into that with the staff and your administrative team. With that in mind, I'm going to ask Ms. Gould, and then following Ms. Gould would be Ms. Cadel, and Mr. Rodriguez, I'm going to ask you to take us out.
On the cell phone thing, one thing we might want to put into the parent academy, I think all the providers now have this, you can block times for your students, and that's what I have done with my children. I started that when they first got their phones, and they got a little better about it. And every time I think they're not doing well with it, I block them again during school hours to accept, and you can put emergency numbers so they can still reach their father, me, each other, and a couple of other people that are my backups. Now, you can do cellular too. It costs, it does cost $5 for cellular, at least with Verizon, but the other things are free. So that, on that. Now, back to my, my school naming thing. One of the reasons that I think it might be time to not have a big, long workshop, but just refresh on this, is we have a much stronger philanthropic program, and there may be more than one way to name now because if we start to look at university models, one of the things that we could do is build endowment for program. And as those endowments build, that would, in perpetuity, provide funding at those sites. So that's another reason why I'd like to see what the impetus was, what our thought process is, because I think there's more than one way to either do naming or raise sponsorship or philanthropic dollars that still give us the same result. Because we, the result is, we want investment back that we can't traditionally subsidize some of those things that those dollars go to, to schools. And we want to make sure that it's not only at that school, but providing to schools that don't have the same ability because of the socioeconomics of that school. So that was just something I didn't want to lose in this. I think that there's some new territory that we've definitely gone beyond dipping our toe in now, that we're sticking the whole foot in, and we want to pursue that as far and wide as possible. So that was my last comment.
Dr. Jenkins, very good. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is helpful because that makes it a broader discussion around branding and marketing and alternative sources of income for our schools. So we could potentially, I'll get with the chairman, we could potentially sort of update on where we are with that inventory and the marketing, which sort of slowed down significantly when our marketing expert was recruited away. But we can certainly bring an update and have that larger discussion. That might be more weighty enough for that discussion. I'll certainly get with the chairman.
Very good. Ms. Cadel.
My guess is if we can figure out the cell phone thing, our area superintendents and their disciplined people will be ecstatic because a lot of the things that are showing up in the media are cell phone videos that are happening at school among friends who were fooling around, and when taken out of context, it looks like it's a knock-down, drag-out fight, and you find out it's two of their best friends, and they're fooling around, and they're taking videos of one another. So not only is it impacting classroom time, I think it, I think it impacts the whole culture of the school. And one of the things that FSBA did with their new school board members, because this has been an age-old problem ever since cell phones came out and children started having them. And there were some new school board members who felt like children should not have their cell phones on at all. And then they were using, there's technology, and as we go along, you can use your smartphone to find out whether or not the children are grasping the concept that you're teaching them in a math class or something. So there is a way that we could channel, if we could figure out academically how it works, to take this behavior that's taking away and actually could be helpful to the teacher to make sure the children are learning the skill they're working on. And there were some people who walked away from that training going, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't realize the power of this." So I, I think, you know, it's a two-fold. And then I go back to sometimes when we've had issues, like when we had the issues at Glen Ridge a couple of years ago. And we, we have parents that are texting to their children during class time, and a lot of times. Huh? Well, and, you know, if we go back, and I can think back probably seven years ago, when Well, and you know, if we go back, and I can think back probably seven years ago, when we had the business community coming and telling us that children work as long as the boss is standing over them, and as soon as the boss moves and leaves, they're on Facebook, they're on, you know, they're on, they're, they're, like you said, they're playing games, they're doing. So it's a problem our employers are having with this generation. And I'm not quite sure how you start the campaign. I mean, it's like the texting, it's not cool to drive and text anymore. And, you know, you go down the list of behaviors that have changed, and in this era of instant communication, and I mean, people laugh at me on the weekends, I don't know where my cell phone is half of the time, except when I'm in the car. It's like, if you want me, you better call me on the landline because I am not texting with you. And I, probably, my phone is still on silent from the Friday afternoon meeting. So I'm still sort of a dinosaur because it's like, call me on landline if you want me on the weekends. So I think we have to figure out where that is, and maybe we can be a leader in harnessing where, where is the right inappropriate place. But, and I know our parents get scared when there's a shooting somewhere, when there's a lockdown, parents are texting right away. But we need to figure out how we communicate and how we discourage that. And like Ms., like Ms. Robinson said, you can still go to the office and call home if you need to.
Okay, I think that we've covered that, Dr. Jenkins. Would you need additional comments on this cell? Because I think that we say that this is a concern of all of the board members. Ms. Colbert, are you still there? Okay, she's probably still driving. Okay, she did, she did her part. Okay, I have Dr. Jenkins for comment, and then Ms. Robinson, and I would like to get you home. I know that Woody is supposed to close us out, but I don't want us to beat a dead horse. I think we all have commented on that, and we know that the, that is a major issue. You, as a school board member, have expressed your concern. We have people here at the school board that are well-trained, that may need to get in there and get this information, and not just being well-trained, but they need to be enforced. I'm in media, and that's what I do. I'm all of last month, and we're taking the month of May and April for Digital Media Month. And this is what we are teaching the students right now, when and how to use their little technical equipment, because that's very important. Most of this that I'm hearing, a lot of this is administrative and following their school policy with the BYOB, because that's very, very important. So Dr. Jenkins, if you would quickly do that for us, if your comment, and then Mr. Rodriguez, and then Ms. Robinson, take us out so that we can go home.
Actually, you already made the comment I was going to make. Issues around BYOD, I'm telling you, I've been in classrooms where they're using their cell phones to do research on the internet, but our students are digital natives, and they are so fast, when they finish that, they can check their Facebook in a heartbeat and then switch back over if you walk over to watch what they're doing. As we move to one-to-one with our devices, we'll have a better ability to say, shut everything else down, we've got your instructional instrument in front of you, and our firewalls are harder to get around. They can't easily get to Facebook. And so I think we're headed in that direction. In the meantime, dealing with digital natives who are so swift on those computers, every one of our high schools that we surveyed, they say we do have teachers using it for an instructional tool. So somewhere between not shutting down the instructional capability until we can get them all to that one-to-one with their actual computers and laptops is where we need to land. I think we're headed towards some solutions in short order, it's just not happening fast enough because those digital natives are right on top of us.
And I am so glad that you are making our hearts feel better because you can hear our concerns, and I know that you know our heart is heavy. So with that in mind, Nancy, you're going to take us out after Woody.
Do you want me or Woody?
I want Woody, and then you take us out.
Just, Ms. Robinson, just to clarify, we do have a couple of executive sessions in May that are not litigation related, though they're related to security matters. So that's what was on there for the 5th. It did get moved. I think they've been moved to the, tentatively to the 12th and 14th, is what I believe. But those are in conjunction with Mr. Eugene Shop in our office, and you'll get the schedule updated. The 5th, you're okay to delete, and we do have, I was just making sure you clarify that.
I just wanted to, once again, I know we've talked about this before, but since I have two juniors tomorrow, thank you again, Dr. Jenkins, for giving every junior in Orange County Public Schools the SAT tomorrow. Tomorrow is SAT Wednesday, and I just think that's fabulous. Thank you so much.
Now, that's a great way to go out, and we have to really thank Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Jesus, and I think Dr. Prince Scott, and all of the principal, Dr. John Wright, Marie Vasquez. You are getting, I think, over 200 juniors and seniors that will be out. There are going to be about 10,000 Alpha Kappa Alpha women out at the Rose in Shingle Creek. You are amazing. They always call us at the kind of last moment, but Dr. Jenkins say, it's our babies. That's what Joy said, she said. And she said, we will get them out there. They are going to be honored with meeting all of the historical black college presidents and spending a day, I believe, at Disney. And Dr. Jenkins, we want to give you a round of applause for making that happen. They are going to recognize you on Friday night also. So we thank you. So Orange County Public School is in the news. I want to say, Judge Belton Perry said that the judge very seldom uses a gavel. And when he came to our school, he said he hardly ever used a gavel. I'm using it tonight. Meeting adjourned. It is 7:29.